Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 30th, 2017, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Public participation, Mr. Mayo?
No one has signed in, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Move on to approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting for October 16, 2017.
So moved.
I have a motion to move.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, thank you. We'd like to schedule two public hearings coming for... One for November 13th, so this is to schedule a hearing for Portobello's revocation for abandonment and/or non-use of an all-alcohol liquor license. That will be on November 13th at 7:05 at the Savings Bank Theater at Wakefield High School, 60 Farm Street. Do I have a motion?
Can I just ask a question, please? I've never seen that language before, the abandonment and/or non-use.
Yeah, we haven't had one that's been abandoned or non-used.
Okay, that's one.
That's why I haven't seen it, yeah.
Got it.
Technically, it's ADCC, it's part of their program, so when we have a license that has, you know, the licensee that's not using it anymore.
Got it.
We gotta pull it back somewhere.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor? Aye. All right, thank you. We'd like to schedule a hearing for National Grid Grant of Location Permit on the MGLC 166, Chapter 22, for Underground Cable Project on November 13, 2017, at 7:10 PM at the Savings Bank Theater at Wakefield High, 60 Farm Street.
So moved.
Moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Licenses and permits. Carmen Victor's license application for Honeydew Donuts, 9:15 Main Street, a continuation of that.
I don't know.
And they're not here again. What is the flavor of the board at this point?
They were contacted.
They were contacted by the town.
Yeah, they said they were contacted.
Yes, yes.
This is the second time they've been on the agenda and haven't shown.
Correct.
Well, typically, they don't have to show, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
On Victor's, Carmen Vic's license, normally, the first time they show, but I guess normally, they do show the first time. For renewals, nobody shows.
Right. So what is the pleasure of the board at this point?
Is there any chance, for any reason, we wouldn't renew it?
I think that they're taking over the existing operation there, so I don't... There's no changes that we know of.
I would have one request. Just somebody pull open the special permit when they put that location in. They've been in violation of it since about six months after they took over and have lots of things around signage and stuff on the sidewalk. It was like, okay, you can have this location, but hey, make sure it looks good, tone it down and all that. There were some strict rules in that whole negotiation that went down, and that's, as so many of these things are, just forgotten for years now.
You can do that, but you do it anyway.
You should do it anyway, so.
I think like last time, it's important for especially a new business owner to be here before the board, at least in the first pass, so they understand what the board's expectations are on behalf of the town. So I think we continue to table until they show.
What do you want to make that?
Just, didn't we ask them to come?
Yes.
Yes. We asked them to particularly show.
From my understanding, they were asked to come, they said they will be here.
Yep.
And that's it. So do you want to make that an informal motion? And do you want to add jaws into it as well, Brian?
Sure, I was gonna say, why don't we just table it for 30 minutes or an hour?
We can table it to the end of the meeting, how's that? Give them opportunity to come in.
Makes sense.
Yep. Let's move on to 4B then, please. One-day liquor license application for Sarah Fawkes on November 13, 2017, at the Americal Civic Center.
So...
Mr. Mayo, do you have background?
No, this is a family christening, and as you know, we're trying to use the Civic Center more and more for these events. After talking with Town Council, even though no alcohol is going to be sold, it's gonna be, you know, I guess wine and champagne, I guess, that he suggested that we do offer and require people to get one-day liquor licenses, which the woman has done.
Any questions from the House of Lords?
Could I just tell the take in general, so the town's liability in that case, Mr. Mullen?
Well, generally, we require that the licensee have insurance. And provided that the town not do anything reckless and have no... The town has no reason to believe that this is somebody who's going to abuse the license, I don't see a basis for liability. Also, we ourselves are fully insured for mere negligence.
I think in this instance, given it's a christening, it's okay, but I think going forward, I think I'd feel more comfortable having a more protection or better policy, you know, going forward, because we are looking to rent it out, and I'm glad that we are able to rent it out more often.
On items like that, we would require big, big events, bonded bartenders, things like that, just like we do when we do our events for the town.
I guess just where do we draw the line?
Yeah, exactly.
If it becomes a 21st birthday, for example, in there, or a 50th birthday, how is, you know, where do we determine?
I think you still need a second, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I do.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let us move to personnel and appointments, please. We'd like to make a recommendation to appoint Amy Wall as a full member to the zoning board of appeals due to her resignation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion on us making Amy Wall a full appointment? Yes, oh, Brian has a lot to say.
Not a lot, just Amy's just been awesome on the board and just has a genuine interest in the town and doing things right and doing things well, and by all accounts is a tremendous contributor to the board, so all for it.
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. Who resigned?
That would be thanks to Kim Hackett. She passed away. I'm not passing away, she passed. Sorry, she moved on. She moved on to another job.
Which you're not watching.
I'm sorry. Yeah, well, I'll get beat up on that.
Do we know that is corrected?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It wasn't a setup, it was just I didn't...
Yeah, it was, it was good, it worked too, that's fine, that's fine.
I don't know if Mrs. Wall wanted to say anything?
Nope.
No one.
Anything else? Motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. So the next one now is a request to advertise for alternate members to the zoning board of appeal. There are two openings. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, thank you very much. Formation and advertising for Community Branding and Wayfinding Advisory Committee. Ladies and gentlemen, during a meeting with Mr. Faverman and Mr. Rivas, they asked that a committee be put together with certain personnel from the town. The initial list is right now at 21 members. There are various board members, there are various department heads, traffic advisory members, members from various components of the section of the town. That would be the chamber, the main street, it would be merchants, a merchant, the landlord, but there are also additional vacant spots that would be made up by the public, and those seats would then need to be advertised to be filled as well. So in order for us to move forward with Mr. Faverman, in order to get a group together to start working on the branding and wayfinding part of the contract that we have with him, this committee was asked to be formed. So right now, if you look at your screens, there is a list that is being... that was presented that lists the candidates that are currently being chosen, and we still have four positions, which I'm working on the small business member, a merchant, right now, but the three candidates, members of the public, are the ones that we put out for advertisement for the required two-week period.
When do we advertise?
We haven't.
We haven't.
If it's approved tonight, we will.
Excellent.
Any comments from the board? Do I have a motion? Oh, sorry.
I just wanna say, I've been working with Mr. Chairman on this a bit, and I think it's a really unique opportunity for those in the community that are interested in being involved. I would encourage anyone that's expressed interest, and to me or anyone else on this board, to apply to a very simple process of just providing information about yourself and your interest, and it's a really unique opportunity to be at the forefront of a really great master plan that we're coming up with for this downtown. So I know there are a lot of folks that are newer to town or folks that have expressed interest in being involved that may not have been involved in the past, and I think that you would be a great fit for this, because having fresh perspectives, new ideas, along with some of the more seasoned folks, I think would be a great blending of old and new in terms of ideas and approach. So please, please, and we'll certainly circulate this on Facebook, and it's gonna be printed in the item as well, and on the town's website, but please take advantage of this opportunity, because I think it's a really, really unique one. Thanks.
Yeah, two things, I couldn't agree more, and then to that end, when we advertise it, let people know what the time commitment is, what the expectations are. Sometimes that scares people, they don't wanna get, you know, it meets three times a week at noon, you know, that's 85% of the population gone, so.
Initially, it's going to be once a month.
Yeah, whatever it is, just put it in the ad, that's all, you know, so people know what it is, month to month, once a month, sounds awesome. Second thing, it's an advisory committee, so what's their charter and deliverable, and they report to us, right? Just to be clear.
Yes. They're to work with the... It's most established, created by the Board of Selectmen, so it reports to the Board of Selectmen. This is to work with Mark Faverman and VHB, our traffic consultant, to kind of bring that whole downtown, I'll call it revitalization, for lack of a better word, together. Whether it's streetscapes, whether it's street furniture, whether it's wayfinding, whether it's signage, whether it's banners, whether it's crosswalk reconfiguration.
And only the public spaces, recognizing we can't do a whole hell of a lot about private, the owned.
Right, we can encourage.
Encourage, right. Get out the encouragement stick at some point, okay.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, you may want to think also about whether to make the members of this committee special municipal employees under the state ethics law, because if they're not, then they become municipal employees as soon as they are appointed, and if... I mean, this is something that affects lawyers particularly, but if one were, say, a local lawyer appointed to this, all of a sudden, he's precluded from ever appearing before any local boards.
So what would you advise, I'm sorry?
The Board of Selectmen has the power to designate any board to be special municipal employees. Your board has done that with respective various boards previously, and if you want... I just think that if you want to maximize the number of people who are... who feel free to apply, you would want to say in, I would recommend a separate vote, that the members of the Community Branding and Wayfinding Advisory Committee shall be deemed special municipal employees.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
I move we find that we establish the committee, as we've discussed, and further that we take the second step of making them special municipal employees.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let us move then on to...
Mr. Chairman, I do believe that Honeydew Donuts?
Yes.
The gentlemen are here, so.
Okay, gentlemen, could you come up front?
My donuts.
Thank you. Could you set your names, please, for the...
My name is Ami. My name is Soy.
Thank you, sir. You are here for Carmen Victor's license for the Honeydew Donuts at 9:15 Main Street?
Yep, that's right.
Thank you. Members of the board, questions on... for the applicants on the request for the Victor's license?
Right. I have one thing I brought up before, which is just when you take over the operation, just pay attention to, there was a special permit issued when that store was originally constructed, and it has some particular requirements about signage and things like that. Just know that what you see down there is not in compliance with that special permit, so they've taken some liberties, you know, we wanted to see them get off the ground and be successful, we'll just know that one of the things we'll be doing is just making sure that it comply with that, so. It's not nothing onerous or anything, but that was the original deal, and every time I drive by there, it just gives me a little pain somewhere, but right here, in the back of my head, that it's not being complied with, and would love to see that happen, but otherwise, you know, good luck to you.
I think we do own some stores in our different towns as well. We are very good at complying with the towns.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So there is no issue on that.
Great.
And could you tell us what the hours of operation are expected to be and how the operation may be different than it currently is?
We keep everything the same, so we are not disturbing like the staff or the hours, like, in fact, like, we want to, like, you know, slowly, right now, I think we are closing at 6:00, we want to slowly go down till 7:00, but no one comes for the beggar or Buffy napkin, like, you know.
So I think two things we want to do, as a new owner, basically, we want to keep it more visible, and I think that's one of the reasons why we close at 6:00 currently, because according to my book, it's not as visible as it's supposed to, so I think we'll give more service. If you come in the store now, we have electronic menu board and whatever the Honeydew requires, that's what we started complying, and so we'll do the same thing for what the town requires. So eventually, you know, we'll get more customers, and then we'll see more demand for the more hours, then we'll go with the... Currently, Honeydew wants us to keep open until 9:00 PM, but I think after 6:00 PM, it's pretty much dead, as you know, but I think we'll see what we can do on that regard.
And I reckon, and the other businesses you have are not in town, right, so this will be your first business in town. So you may not be aware, but you just heard us talking about the downtown revitalization. That also extends to Greenwood as well, and I think one of the things that we're really trying to do is make a concerted effort with all business owners, but especially new business owners, to understand and appreciate what the town is looking for, the townspeople specifically, and Greenwood is a unique area in that it has great potential, it has some great businesses already, but great opportunities as well, and so I'll say, it's an expectation, to the extent we can have one, for a private business, that, you know, businesses are engaged in the community, but also cognizant of the fact that we're trying to improve, you know, the aesthetics of the town, the business environment and the business community, and so to the extent that we can have partners in the private businesses that make up our town, it's such an important piece to that.
Absolutely.
We, as a governing body, can do only so much of it, and we obviously can't, you know, regulate and control all that you do as a private business owner, nor would we want to, but that cooperation and that commitment from, you know, present business owners is so, so important to achieving our objectives, and ultimately, particularly for your business, because we wanna, you know, that's a really, you know, it's a gem of a little area of our town, and we can do a lot with it.
Yeah, sure. And absolutely.
So we look forward to being partners with you on that, but we really, you know, would appreciate you guys, you know, being a very visible part of that.
Definitely, we'll try our best.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you for coming here tonight, and thank you for, you know, the shop in Greenwood.
A pleasure, yeah.
A particular concern in Greenwood is parking. It's a problem we have every day with some of the other businesses in the area. If you do, your employees or yourselves, if you are at the shop, just maybe park as far away as you can from that location, you know, to allow customers to, you know, shop at not only your place, but some of the other establishments there.
Yeah, I think I have similar scenario on one of my store in Andover. Next door is a bank. Here also, I initially talked to the bank, who we are the customer of, and we are gonna get some help for my employees, for the bank area, so that way we can leave all the... any parkings open for the customers.
Customers, thank you.
Application, 9:15 Main Street?
So moved.
Moving seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Okay.
When do you... When do you take over?
Well, we already took it over.
You already, okay.
And I think that initially, before we took over, we called the town, and there is like a 45 days or three months timeframe, meaning that we have to finish all this work, so.
Okay.
I already had my service license and all of the requirements was all done, so.
Good.
But if you cover what's supposed to be.
Okay.
Beautiful. Thanks. Good luck.
Thank you.
Members of the board, I would like your approval to take Item C out of order and bring it into the first now, as we move into presentation, action items, and take care of the holiday stroll before we get into the presentation. Any objections from the board? No. No objections.
Good evening.
You are here for the approval of the holiday stroll on December 2nd, 2017?
Right. We request them to conduct the holiday stroll on Saturday, the 2nd of December, between the hours of 3:00 and 7:00 PM. Street closing to occur at 1:00 PM. Actual event time is 2:45 PM, with start of the parade at the Civic Center. We request to close Main Street to vehicular traffic from Yale Ave. to Richardson Ave. Leaven Richardson open for right turn only bound traffic. Closing Lincoln Street and Smith Street, so that access to Lincoln Street parking lot can be maximized, excuse me, and provide a longer travel route for the carriage rides. To close Albion Street to vehicular traffic from Main Street to North Ave, the committee will meet with the town's logistic team, as required prior to the event, to ensure vehicular and pedestrian safety. Request to utilize the area surrounding the Civic Center and part of Harmony Street at the commencement of the parade. Request that the board authorize and approve a 10-day liquor license with actual distribution of alcohol occurring at, on December 2nd, between 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Additional request of time is for out delivery and return of unused alcohol.
Members of the board, any questions regarding the requested approval for the 9th annual Civic Center Holiday Stroll to be held on Saturday, December 2nd, between the hours of 3:00 and 7:00 PM, with a shutdown being requested from starting at 1:00 on Saturday, December 2nd, and continuing until the DPW opens the street up again, which will probably be around 8:00.
So moved.
So moving, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the request?
Can we... Steve and Chairman, can you just tell us, when we do these things, the cost to the town?
Well, it depends on how many people, but it's in the $6,000 to $7,000 range, tops.
And that's like cleanup DPW?
Cleanup DPW details the whole thing, yeah.
Right. Thank you.
How does this compare with prior years? Is it any different, the scheduling?
It's basically the same, except Smith and Lincoln Street are different this year, because I think the courses are going down, Lincoln, and coming across Smith, and then up, plus water, and then onto Main. That's the only change.
Yeah, I think it's pretty much the same, and what we do with the logistics team is mentioned in here, we have all disciplines in police fire, DPW, and we talk about, you know, how we close the streets, how we angle things, so it works out pretty good, so.
Thanks for doing it.
It's the same.
We invite all of you to be part of the parade. Please join us.
It's a half parade?
It's a half parade.
A half parade, you have to wear a hat.
It's a half parade, yes. Brian Fawkes says, be there or be square, and he's the official mayor of the town right now. So is there any further discussion on the matter? All in favor of granting the approval, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, thank you, sir.
But if there's no else you need.
Good night now. Thank you very much, members. Let's move on to the next item, the youth risk behavioral survey results. Catherine, come to the table.
Hi. For those of you that don't know me, I think I know most everyone, I'm Catherine Dingbrown, the town Substance Abuse Prevention Coordinator, and this is a presentation, actually Brendan Kent and I put together for the school committee, but Mr. Mayo and I thought it would be appropriate for the Board of Selectmen, because there are a lot of strategies we can do town-wide, not just based in the school, to address some of the issues that are highlighted in these survey results, and we have a lot of hardworking folks on our coalition, including Selectmen Longo and a lot of dedicated youth and adults throughout our community looking at this data. So this data is unique, because normally, we do this survey every two years. It's a survey developed by the youth risk beha... by the CDC, but this year, we had the opportunity to have Leahy Health fund the survey, so normally, we do it every two years, and this year, we did it on off-year, so we actually have back-to-back year data, which is very unique. And then we had John Snow, Inc. do the evaluative process for it. So just an overview, it's... This data that you're looking at was administered in 2017 in April, and as I said, it's by the Centers for Disease Control, and a lot of times, people say, oh, well, kids just lie on this survey, and, you know, they're gonna exaggerate, but there are a lot of things in the survey that make it really impossible for them to lie. If they... We put in fake questions, we put in a fake drug, so if they say they're using Derbisol, we're not gonna even count their survey results, so there are a lot of things to take in place.
You're gonna figure out what Derbisol is.
I know. Now we have to come up with a new drug for next year. And then what was unique this year, though, was we were able to compare against the rest of the Middlesex League, so all the other communities, Burlington, Melrose, Redding, Arlington, so we could get a better understanding of where we stood, as opposed to just comparing ourselves to the state, so like communities, so. The concerning data trends that I wanted to highlight were, some of them are a lot of environmental strategies that are kind of out of Wakefield's control, so the vaping e-cigarette use is rising at alarming rates, and I'll kind of show you that data. Marijuana use has increased significantly. Number of youth reporting that they have a trusted adult at the high school has decreased, and Galvin bullying has increased, and I'll talk a little bit about what that looks like. But just quickly, I know I'm only gonna take about 10 minutes here, because you have all the data, but I did want to highlight some things. So the high school, this is the... One of the data points that we're most concerned about is tobacco use, so as you can see on your screens, we've had a really significant decline in past 30 days, that's regular cigarette users. If we ask you if you use in the past 30 days, that's someone that's gonna use more regularly, so we've gone from about 16% of high school seniors, of high school students, to down around 7%, so that's a significant decrease just since 2011. But what we see on the right is the e-cigarette or vaping use, that's exploded, and someone that's looked... Looks at public health data all the time, you don't see jumps like this, where you see data just almost double in just from 2016 and 2017, so when you look at that, that's 300 youth that are using these vaping devices, and I actually brought a few of them, do you mind if I move that? So I'll just actually show you the most common devices that we're finding, unfortunately, at the high school and at the Galvin now, so there are these larger devices, you can just pass them around, and... These are actually the most common, they're the Jules, so you'll... And the... All throughout the high school, you find these little cartridges out everywhere, so.
It looks like a flash, though.
Yeah.
Yes. And then, and then this one, if I put it in a cap of, if there were pens and markers, you wouldn't even know the difference, it looks like an eyeliner or something, so, and then these, you can just kind of get a sense of the devices, and 99% of the time, they either contain nicotine or THC, so a lot of times, youth will say, oh, it's just, I'm just using the flavored water vapor. Well, it's big tobacco, they're not gonna sell youth flavored water vapor, because they know that's not gonna... And so they've, they've found out a new market, and unfortunately, our teens, our youth in Wakefield are responding to it, and I see the parents of the... of anyone in middle school or high school kind of nodding their head, because they see it, or if you're driving to the high school in the morning, you just see the plumes of the vape. Even Brendan Kent will say, he sees it driving around to different sporting events in the afternoon. It's just something that we want to be aware of, we already have two vape shops on Albion Street, you know, what kind of messages are our youth getting, they're hearing the... So you just want to be aware of the marketing, because this is not marketed to me, the soccer mom, or you, you know, it's thinking about who are they targeting with their things, so. they targeting with their things, so. When the Board of Health votes for things like flavor bans, this is kind of the, the goal. And then you can just see our past 30-day. And again, with the marijuana, it's again, national and statewide trends are showing that we've seen a significant increase, again, in just from 2016 to 2017, our past 30-day use went from 20% to nearly 30%. And where it's, you could see it was pretty much trending down, we saw a big spike in use. And what does that look like? 256 students using marijuana in the past month. That's a lot of students. And this, the marijuana nowadays, the THC content is so much higher, so it's not like the marijuana from the 70s and 80s, a lot of people kind of have in their mind when they're thinking about it. And what that does to young people, especially the forms it comes in now. At the high school, we're not seeing the traditional, you know, maybe it's a few joints rolled in a backpack or something. It comes in more of the forms of like the edibles. So, we've had gummy bears and things like that. And so, where are they getting them kind of working?
You might want to double down on the significance of the THC content.
Yes.
She just mentioned it, and I don't know if everybody knows why THC content matters.
Yes, yeah, so THC content, for example, back in, I'm not, I'm going to do some averages. So, back in the mid 80s, THC content was hovering around 4% maybe. That was a little high. Now it's up to 14, 15% average, so. And then the dosages, they're not really, you know, what, what that can do to a developing brain, what that can do, the ER visits, even just in Melrose, Wakefield, that they're seeing, so. It's just, it's really important for people to understand that. So, we do a lot with, with educating parents, but the other thing with the vape devices that we're seeing, about a third of those are used for vaping THC. And with the medical marijuana industry now in Massachusetts and soon to be recreational legal market, we'll see more of that. So, just kind of being aware and thinking about, as a town, what kind of things can we do to maybe limit the expanding vape shops or other things? Because I went down to Salemwood Square in Malden, and they actually have four vape shops, where you can stand and walk in a circle and see them all. And then I went into one of them, and it looked like a head shop. I mean, the bongs, the hookah pipes, all the little knickknacks. It was, and that's where we hear that Wakefield youth are going. So, we just want to be aware. And this was the other really concerning one, was the driving while using marijuana. You can see it's significantly higher than the rest of the Middle Sex League. So, what are things that are, you know, that's something that we're working closely with, with our police, but with our educators, and figuring out, how do we get that message across that you're not a better driver when you're high? Because that's a lot of times what they'll say to us, and that it is illegal, so, yeah.
What in the world would, would, would they think they're a better driver?
I don't know.
I mean, are students stupid to, seriously?
Yeah. So, well, apparently, they're not getting the message, so that's one thing that we really want to get across to them. Because we're thinking, I'm driving around, my kids around town, knowing that, you know, 25% are driving around after using marijuana. It's really frightening. So, we're, you know, we're really putting our heads together to figure out what are some of the strategies we can do to address that. Alcohol use has pretty much stayed around the same, but I'll talk about some of the strategies we're doing around that. We're right around the Middle Sex League average. And the same with prescription drug use. And then, this is something we just do to show our school committee that would like more health education at higher levels, because they get it one semester in ninth grade and then don't get it again. And then they start engaging in all the risky behaviors, so. That's just something. And then this is something that I really think the community's a big part of, and we're going to be looking at what community strategies we can do. But that perception of risk or harm really impacts use rates. So, if you see something as being harmful, so you can look down at e-cigarettes being very un-, they don't see it as harmful, the use rates go up. And same with smoking marijuana, it's dropped significantly since 2011. And then getting our parents on board, because our youth do listen to parents, and active parents, parents that talk often definitely have an impact on their use, use rate. So, we just try to get that across to parents through all the different parenting programs we do. And then I'm just going to show you the Galvin data, pretty much mirrors the high school data, which again shows you how valid this data is. We've seen the decrease in tobacco and the significant increase in vaping. And that's what's scaring a lot of us, is that you have 7th graders doing things that a 7th grader wouldn't have done years ago. They're doing the vaping, because they, they wouldn't pick up a cigarette, but they would vape. So, that's something that we're trying to get across. In fact, I was down at the Galvin the other day, and all the 7th grade boys got brought to the cafeteria because there were vape devices found for the third week in a row. So, it's something that we want to be aware of. And again, our marijuana use has gone up. And again, looking at some of the risk and protective factors. So, just overall, we've done a lot of strategies in the community and in the schools, and it's really, we're really fortunate here in Wakefield that we have a strong commitment from our, all of our leaders across the town, from, from police, from the, from town hall, from the school. So, we're able to move things forward. And we're really looked at from, at the statewide level as a model community, where they say, go to Wakefield, ask them what they're doing. So, we're glad that we can help out at the statewide level and be able to share our data and talk about what works and what, what's not working. But these are just some of the strategies we're doing in the schools to address substance use. And then, I, with the school committee presentation, we didn't talk about all the strategies we're doing with the police and out in the community. And we're excited about some of our new strategies for the next couple of years, just to opportunities. We've got a new diversion program with the police department, so any young person that gets caught in the community now has the eligibility to go through a diversion program instead of going to the court. So, that just launched in September, and we've already got a few candidates, so we're excited that that is moving forward, and a lot of other quality innovative programs that have proven effective in other communities. So, we're looking forward to implementing them here. Other things that, you know, you're going to be hearing about, we've got a new committee that's been established to kind of take care of our prom house tradition that we've had in Wakefield, where the students would go out of state, and it's something that a lot of people had been not happy with for years, and unfortunately took a tragedy to get this committee established and moving forward. So, they're going to have a public meeting, actually, I'm part of this committee, we're having a public meeting on December 6th to lay out how senior week's going to work now, with lots of points during the week where the students are engaged, and a lot of positive things. Things like, they might be sending the high school seniors through their elementary schools with their caps and gowns, with all the kids lining the halls. Different opportunities all during the week to keep them engaged, plus an all-night party.
Will that meeting be at the high school?
It will be at the Galvin auditorium on December 6th, yes. So, a lot of strategies that we're doing around mental health, really looking at the data. And this is where we saw some places where we're higher than the Middle Sex League, and, and that's been a lot of strategic work on this. So, suicidal thinking, it's something we're really concerned about. Things peaked back in 2014, we implemented a lot of strategies. It's not where we want it to be, but fortunately, it is trending in the right direction. This also reflects the Galvin data. And same with emotional well-being and self-harm, we're just trying to kind of address that and really kind of look at what are our protective factors, not look at just what's, what's scary out there, but what are we doing to protect people, both in the, young people in the schools and in the communities? So, that again was the alarming trend with the, at least a teacher adult to talk to at the school.
Does that correlate to any other activity going on at the school, or anything taken away? Like, did we cut back on counseling, or did we get rid of some program where students were matched with an advisor? Did something occur that where that maybe they had this real automatic and clean person they could go to, like a clean relationship, and that was, you know, cut out of a budget or something like that, and now the kids are left?
I don't know, I know that, I know they're, they're closely looking at this. They're taking this data really seriously and trying to figure out what it is and what things that they can do. Because there are evidence-based strategies that you can implement to raise those numbers of students that know who their trusted adult is. And if they don't, say, for example, some districts actually have the students write it down and on a card. They don't have to turn it into anyone, or they do turn it into someone just so they know and they can identify. So, there, there are things that we did. We worked on this at the Galvin a long time ago, and it really, we instituted a number of strategies, and it, we were able to see the numbers go up, so.
It would seem, pardon the term, you know, easy to fix, or some things, usually these things have simple solutions, like, well, we matched the kid with an adult and said, you have to meet every week, you know, for five minutes, 10 minutes.
Right.
I mean, like, like real, straight-up things.
But that is, you know, that's something that they talk about. They, the, the switch of the way homeroom is structured has changed over the years.
Oh, so it has, something has changed?
There are some things that they're looking, you know, we have to, yeah, they're, definitely. Again, the numbers are trending down, and then the protective factors, we're really, you know, keen on that, and we'll be doing more around that, especially community-wide. What are the assets our, our youth have in the community? Things like, you know, there are 40 developmental assets that young people can have, the more that they have, the better off they'll be. And so, we're going to be talking more about that in the future. Again, the, some of the strategies that I know the Board of Selectmen have supported, one is the interface referral program. That's something that the school and the town splits the cost of, and we keep seeing the numbers go up and up and up of the number of people that are using the interface referral program, getting matched with a mental health clinician or someone to help them with their substance use disorder. So, we're really seeing that program pay off, and we're, we're getting a lot of positive feedback from people that have used that program. Really kind of just putting together a whole district-wide approach to mental health and community-wide approach. So, working with our senior center, working with the library, they're wonderful partners, and really looking at what we can do. And that's a good example of how the community uses this data. The library used our data around mental health and really started to say, what, what can we do? And they have this entire resilience program this year, really looking at how do we build up the resilience of, of everyone in our community to make it a healthier place? And then, it continued mental health. And our police, it's just amazing to be in this community where our police are kind of at the forefront of our mental health work, and a lot of other communities don't have that benefit. And that's where I can say, oh, my, our police officers are, are trainers of mental health first aid, so they can go in, and they're doing the training for the school district. So, it's a huge, you know, really win-win where our police are taking that lead and can be a model for other communities across the state. So, we're really fortunate to have that. And then, kind of, our goals for the next two years, really looking at pushing our social emotional learning down to younger grades. So, we've got health now starting in kindergarten, so students are really learning how to cope at a younger age when bumps in the road happen, so. And that's a huge primary prevention strategy for substance use, because you can actually, there are indicators for kindergartners, first graders, if they're likely to use substances later on in their life. So, it's really developing those social emotional skills at a younger age, really boosting up our mental health first aid. We've got a lot of professional development happening at the, the school district right now with mental health, and then doing a lot of mental health screening as well. So, our sexual health data seems to be pretty consistent with the Middle Sex League, and just making sure that we're really looking at increasing our health education opportunities for as our students get older and they engage in riskier behaviors. Violence and bullying, it's really tough when you, they, they've got their phones attached to them all day long. And, I mean, we see it with the community groups, people go on there and ask a simple question, and people get bullied. So, you wonder why our kids are bullying, you know? So, we want to really understand. So, part of the reason we think sometimes the data goes up, especially around the Galvin, is we raise the attention, and we, we talk about it a lot, so they're better able to identify it. But still, that doesn't, that doesn't mean, that's not the only reason it's, it's going up. There are more avenues to bully and sneakier ways for students to be harmful to one another. So, this is something that we're continuing to identify and really working in the schools and with parents on this issue. And this is something, sexual contact against will and dating violence, it's, we, our Wakefield Alliance Against Violence has really grown over the last couple of years. I'm proud to be a member of that, and we have gone from an operating budget of $1,000 a year, over $10,000 a year, now have an active group at the high school. We're really able to implement evidence-based strategies around dating violence, healthy behaviors, really looking at ways that people can speak up and identify what's okay and what's not okay. And what are some of our school cultures, our community cultures that promote unhealthy behavior towards one another? And then, as I said, the Galvin data and some of the things that we're, we're doing. And I said, we have a new diversity leaders group and a violence prevention group at the high school. And the middle school's also expanding their work. And Brendan Kent has been phenomenal in bringing in extra funds from the state to address this. And our RAD Kids Program, my own children went through it this year, and it was amazing the things that it brought home to our home that we were able to identify that, that my husband and I didn't even know. So, I was very impressed with that program. Another thing that, the last piece of data is the physical activity and screen time. We're doing a pretty good job getting our kids out inactive, but we still are concerned with the number of students who report the immense amount of time they're spending on screens. So, what can we do as a community to get the kids out to the great parks and assets we have in our community and away from those screens, and encouraging physical activity? So, in conclusion, we really want to increase our parent education, things like In Plain Sight we'll be offering again later this fall at Town Hall. Things like, you know, if parents, if parents want their seniors and juniors to have parking passes, they have to attend a mandatory assembly. Parents aren't going to come out, something that's drug and alcohol education. So, we've got to be creative in increasing that health education curriculum. The mandatory state expert screening we'll be implementing this year for all of our 7th graders and all of our 9th graders, so we'll be able to get a better idea if there are students that are presenting with issues, getting them the help that they need early. That's our number one priority, because we're also doing the work with our family service officer for our young adults in the community that are struggling, and a lot of them didn't get the help they needed when they started, say, using marijuana every day in 7th grade or 8th grade. So, really that upstream prevention, getting people more help they need, maximizing that mental health support services, and then expanding our bullying prevention, so. Anyone have any questions?
Just before we go into the general, just back on the physical activity one?
Sure.
The high school one looks, that's probably the most out-of-whack stat in the whole deck here, is how little, you know, less than 25% of our people, you know, basically get regular exercise, where the state averages looks to be, appear to be closer to 50% on the left there.
Oh, yeah, so that's for 60 minutes, five or more times a week. So, that, yeah, that's students playing probably a sport or something like that, so.
But like this, in the rest of the state, it's half the students, and in our town, it's less than a quarter.
Yeah, yeah.
Any reason for that? Do we know?
I'm not sure. I mean, when you get to high school, that gets, the, the physical, phys ed time goes down, and...
But that's true across the state, and the state, so if you look at Galvin, the state is at, the state's at the same. And then it looks like in our town, and we are better than that at, in middle school. And then when you get to high school, it just drops like a rock.
Yeah.
So, there's something going on at the high school.
Yes, yeah. Yeah. I, you know, I'm not sure.
So Catherine, I want to thank you first of all for the presentation. Before I open it up to the rest of the board, I just have a couple of questions. Isn't there an age limit on access to the vaping?
That's a good question, yes. We actually passed that, our Board of Health passed that two years ago to 21.
To 21, so it's, the access that you said is that they're going out of town to pick it all up?
They're either going out of town, or are you, created some videos, if you haven't seen those yet, that show that they can get them online, so, too. They take the cash, go get a Visa gift card, and then go online and, and buy it, and then the package arrives.
And you made the comment about having three right now, you know, there's a four... You know, there's a fourth on, a third one going, a fourth one on Albion should go, a third one.
Third.
Third one on Albion.
Yeah.
So we have four within less than a half a mile of one another.
Yeah, and close to the Galvin and the Boys and Girls Club.
All four of them will be, right.
So, and that's that thing where perception does matter and where they see these cropping up in their towns or if it's close to their school. That's why a lot of times towns try to do proximity bans or things like that. Or even something where we had an issue with people drinking at the playing fields years ago, where, you know, I lived by Malden, I'd go down there and it would be, you know, beer cans. And so it was just simply working with the rec commission and working with the police and saying, okay, we, if they want to apply and use these fields, the, you know, there's going to be some, you know, some rules that they have to follow in it, you know? And it changed and that doesn't happen as fairly at all anymore, the way it used to.
Questions from the board? Is that, no?
So about a month ago, I sat through this presentation at a wake-up meeting and requested that, you know, Catherine be here tonight to really just get maybe a bigger venue to show the towns and, because it's something as a father, as a parent of an eighth grader at the Galvin, I think it's something that, you know, we should all know. We are, I believe, moving, the Board of Health is moving forward to capping the number of tobacco licenses in town, which, you know, if this board can be any help to you, please let us know. The In Plain Sight, if you haven't gone through that, parents, even non-parents should actually take that up and publicize that as best you can because it, I went through it about a year and a half ago, it was fantastic. And when we banned, you know, the recreational marijuana shops in town, I really, you know, we went after the candies and they're finding the gummy bears in the junior high, you know, they're finding gum, you know, the, the edibles at the high school. It's something that really, really bothers me. We can still have, you know, grow your own pot at home legally, but it's really the edibles that have troubled me and moving forward, they'll continue to trouble me. But again, thank you for showing up and, you know, thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, it's, it's, it seems like the supply is no longer the issue because with, like you said, with the internet and there's just the mobility of the world. If, if kids want the stuff, they'll find it and there will always be somebody there to sell it to them. So the greater focus has to be on the demand side and eliminating the demand and that's, and that's also the harder one to tackle. So it looks like you're doing, doing a lot, but.
Right, yeah. It, it does and it has to, it's a, it's a whole community where, you know, where parents start feeling kind of courageous to come together and say, we're not, you know, you know, you can't do that or, you know, where'd you get that from and really kind of pushing back.
How does the incidence, so I saw that the, the use of marijuana is, is increasing. How does that track to the use, the, just the general population's increased use of marijuana? Imagine it's the same. Like right now, we've voted as a society that this is culturally acceptable.
Right.
So why would you expect anything other than for our kids to find it to be acceptable or something?
Right. I, I don't know. I haven't seen any adult use data in Massachusetts. We're, we're really unique that we have back-to-back year data. So that's why a lot of, Jason Lewis was really interested in looking at this when it came out because we're one of the few communities that can show.
Before and after.
Yeah, so, yeah.
It'd be interesting to know, you know, if we were, if we're up 30%, if it's up generally 30% in the state, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Hi Catherine. On the, the sexual violence and the dating, dating violence aspect, that's something that I'm interested in because I have children at that age and I have a freshman and a junior. And there is a culture that, I've heard things recently that, that bother me quite a bit. And I'm not so sure our adults are doing the best job at not doing the old, boys will be boys, girls. I, I just, I've heard too many stories and for, to be quite honest, neither of my children attend Wakefield schools, but my son's best friends are Wakefield and they're at my house constantly. And there's a culture that is making me a little bit uncomfortable. Is there a curriculum that, you know, starts in first grade that goes through with regard to this kind of stuff?
Well, the MVP program doesn't, but what we're doing is we're looking at evidence-based K through 12 health education curriculum called Michigan Model and that does have violence prevention and, you know, the, how people treat each other, things like that. But absolutely, if you, if there are, what we do need is people to speak up, you know, people will tell us, tell us stories at Wakefield Alliance Against Violence, oh, you know, the cheerleaders still have to wear the football player's jersey and show up to their, you know, those are the things that we need to know about and, and it's, what kind of culture does that send?
I'll be calling you later.
Yes.
Yeah, that it's probably well-intentioned, but the message being sent when someone acts badly, the cookie should be baked, is ridiculous. So, that's.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
You know, it's connected to the, the treatment of women and empowering our young girls and realizing.
Send us some emails.
I will, thank you.
I think first off, and having gone through the presentation before tonight, these statistics are just so sobering. And when you look at this across the board, I mean, I am encouraged by the fact that we're doing better than some of the other towns, but I'm not encouraged by what these numbers are showing. I mean, 186 students admitted to binge drinking in the last 30 days for 2017, correct? And 6.3% of them admitted to drunk driving. And that was the same in 2016 as it was in 2017, despite the fact that obviously there were, were some great tragedies that these students experienced. I understand all, all that you've, you've set out to do. What more can the community do? Because it, it seems like, I mean, some of these, every one of these stats, I mean, I'm encouraged that the attempted suicides are down, but it goes, they go from 64 to 32. I mean, that's really, really troubling. But the marijuana use, I mean, that's up by what, almost, almost 35% year over year? So I, I, I know the school is doing, I know you're doing, you know, what you can, but what more can we do as a community be doing for this?
Well, I mean, I would love people to get more, kind of have the reaction that you have, be more, you know, outraged and, and say, what can we do? What can we do to, you know, place more protective factors around our young people to have healthier habits? So I think some of the things are, is like when we have events, to all share them and promote them. When we talk about, you know, we're going to have this new culture of senior week and everyone kind of saying, yep, that's what Wakefield's doing, this is what, what we're doing. So really kind of promoting the positive things that we're having and having the courage to stand up when something isn't okay and look for resources, point people in the right directions.
Just on that line, I, I think one of the things that works with, with students is when it comes from within. It's just been, you know, decades of parents telling kids what they can't do and that doesn't generally prove very effective. In fact, it sometimes gets the opposite result. It almost, I don't know, I'd probably focus on finding, you know, enough quote, cool kids in school, the ones who, there, we just know there are ones, bad choice of words by me. There are people who have some leadership, authority and ability, whether they've earned it or just, they're just natural at it. And find those kids and tap into them to take the lead to, to, you know, stem the tide of this stuff. Because very often, those are the same kids who throw the best parties, right? And lead in the opposite direction.
Right.
And I think if you, if you focus there and get some sort of, again, gargantuan task, easier said than done.
But no, that, and that's, and that's.
But that's gotta be like the best way.
And that's definitely, and you're right on, that's, the evidence shows that and that's, we, we do have, we have a dynamic youth action team at the high school. A lot of them are captains of their sports teams or student council leaders. So they're kind of helping shift and when we're talking about this prom shift, we're, they're all having the input there, saying, oh, nope, we can't be at, at one of the schools. So we're like, oh, yep, okay.
We can't do that.
So they, you know, that's definitely something. And at, at the Galvin, you know, we have this great, your daughter, your, your daughter, we're both part of the Galvin Youth Action Team and they, they all kind of get together and they say, though, this, these are the trends we're seeing towards vaping. You know, it would be great if you get some of the high schoolers to come down and do workshops with all the eighth graders in their health classes. So that's actually happening next month where our high school leaders are coming down. I said, wear your, you know, your soccer shirt and your football shirt and come down here and show them, because they all want to be on the soccer and the football and the marching band. They're going to come down and do those workshops. So absolutely, this is, I, I just skimmed over a lot of the strategies, but yeah, that's definitely part of it.
Right.
But also having those parents that are influencers be able to influence their peers too, because I think that's an important piece of it too. Wanting to be the cool parent, it's, it's painful.
Get over it.
Yeah.
How can we do this survey annually? I mean, it, it seems like a no-brainer that, you know, waiting 24 months between this and looking at the stats even year over year, it, it's very obvious that there are some real fluctuations here and a lot of them aren't good fluctuations. They're not going in the right direction. So I know that you had mentioned that Lahey Health had paid for this, which allowed for this off-year. How, how can we make it so that this is something we're doing annually?
That's a great question. I think right now, we're going to, because of funding-wise, we'll probably stick to every other year, but what we are going to do, what we want to do on those off-years is do another type of survey where this one's really like focusing on the risks and stuff. So there's a survey out there that we're kind of looking at right now called the Asset Survey where you're looking at, I think I mentioned, those 40 developmental assets. And those actually focus more on the community and more on what families are doing and things like, do my, would my neighbor say something if I was doing something wrong? That's an asset in a youth's life. So the more assets they have, and there's a lot of scientific research out there around it. So a youth that has 30 to 40 assets in their lives are much less likely to engage in a lot of these risky behaviors versus someone with, so even reading for pleasure, library can promote that. That's an asset in someone's life. Does my parent, do we sit down and have family meals a couple of times a week? That's an asset in their life. So they tick off these 40 assets. There's something our elementary schools, our selectmen can all, the whole community can kind of get together and say, how can we build the assets in our Wakefield's youth life so they're less likely to engage in these risky behaviors? So I think that, that's one thing, but I, I mean, I mean, if we could do the survey every year, it'd be great, but it does cost a lot of money.
So what did it take to get Lahey to do it this year, for example?
So it was a lot of the superintendents coming together and saying, we really want to do this. And they, they had some, with their community benefits money, they had some money to do it. So we're hoping that they repeat it again in two years.
I mean, because this just seems so critical. I mean, I, I'd like to think I'm fairly tuned into what's going on in town and I have to say, I'm, I'm astounded by what you presented here tonight.
Right.
And I can't imagine that most of the community even has a clue about the, you know, these numbers.
Right, well, we, it gets in the, it gets in the paper and believe it, more people comment on coyotes than they do on things like this sometimes, I feel like, you know, it's, it's, it's a reality.
So many more coyotes.
Right, that's true.
I just feel like, you know, if this just got out and, you know, it, it just made more known because these are, these are significant numbers that impact a lot of people in this community.
Yeah.
And frankly, when you're talking about things like drunk driving or driving while under the influence of marijuana, you're talking about, you know, impacting anyone in the community.
Right, right.
Potentially.
And I think too, is people will say, oh, I did it when I was a kid, I'm okay. Well, I think, like you said, that, that the marijuana's changed, the out, the way they consume alcohol has changed, the risk factors have changed. It's, I mean, there are, we did have tragedies when people were younger too. So it's, it's important to say, there are some things that haven't changed, but there are a lot that have. So I agree with you. If you want to help promote any of this, you can use your help.
Just my final question for, actually for Mr. Mullen, the idea of a proximity ban or just putting some sort of limitations on, say, vaping shops, for example, what sort of authority does the board have for that or does the town have generally with those sorts of restrictions?
I should think there'd be two ways that that could be handled. One would be through the Board of Health, which can adopt a regulation like that. And second, it could be a general bylaw the town meeting could pass.
I just think we should, you know, give that some serious thought and continue this discussion because it's, I mean, if we're talking four vaping shops now, I mean, how many vaping shops do we need near the junior high before we see these numbers keep going up and up?
Okay, thank you.
When does the, the meeting scheduled, Catherine, for the cap?
For?
The 7th of 6th?
Oh, for the senior week?
No, the cap on tobacco.
Oh, the tobacco, hmm.
I think this is at the 13th or the 14th?
Yeah, it's coming up.
Okay.
I don't have my planner in front of me, but.
But to his point, we are, you know.
Yes, the, the limit. And I encourage you during that meeting, they'll show the percentage of tobacco permits that we have in Wakefield compared to a number of the other communities in this area. It's astounding, the number of tobacco permits we have compared to Malden, compared to Stonemelrose, a lot of the other communities. So we have a lot for, besides our community.
Who controls, do we control the tobacco permits, the L.A. side?
I don't think so.
No, that's right. It's under Board of Health.
Okay.
So, just, it is a, good information to have when you start to see those things because even in my position, I didn't realize the disparities.
Just a quick question on, so did you mention the cost? I know the surveys used to be every, we used to be two years apart.
Right.
It's making a good point, having it every year, but what was the, did you mention the cost?
Well, this year, it was the first time we did it online, so that actually saved cost significantly, but it's usually between $4,000 and $6,000 to do.
But isn't part of the value that compares to see the trends? So you, you kind of need all the other towns to know if you're out of whack, right?
Yeah, yeah, so we're hoping.
Do some value.
Yeah, yeah. Sounds like she's got this other survey then.
I have to think with a school, you know, a school department budget of over $30 million that they could somehow figure.
38.
Well, yeah, we used to have to come up with the cost ourselves and, and.
So is it four, $5,000 per community that has to come up with the money?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So I actually think the bigger question, if everyone's thinking about money, is Catherine, you said all the amazing work that you do, you said your budget is $10,000 for Lahey.
Oh, my, but our budget for substance abuse prevention in Wakefield is $125,000. So that's myself, a part-time youth person and all the initiatives, a lot of the initiatives that you saw there. So, and that's grant-funded, so Wakefield's not, you know, besides some of the things like, like the Interface Program and stuff.
That would be a good stat to arm yourself with, when, you know.
Absolutely.
Relative to other towns.
Well, you know, a lot of other towns have actually taken in the position, in their town budget, when federal funding or, or state funding dries up.
We could add to it, right? And just, we could take the federal, we'll always have to take.
Oh, yeah. And we'll be reapplying this year, we, where I, we just started our fifth year of the funding and we'll, I'll be reapplying for the next five years this winter, so.
Okay.
And so thank you for all the work that you do on this. And yes, we should talk about funding and how we as a board and a town can support all the work you're doing. The other thing, just to go about the vape stores, I get the Board of Health is the one who gives out the licenses. Anyone at the Halloween Spooktacular this weekend, their business is in our community and they were passing out coupons and it was a kid event and we should discuss that. I don't know who that falls under, but I got handed three coupons for 10% off at the vape store.
At the Halloween Spooktacular?
At the Spooktacular. So there are merchants in our town. This is a conversation that, I think that's a conversation we need to have here about those events that we do.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I noted.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you very much. Very enlightening presentation.
Great job, thanks.
Members of the board, let's move on with the next item on the agenda. It will be 6B Trash Reception Code in Downtown. This was a request initiated by myself based upon the numerous complaints and the numerous times that I've walked downtown to see our black trash barrels overflowing with trash at a number of, well, with, in two specific locations. And it, it struck me odd that the trash barrels weren't just filled with trash, they were filled with black trash bags or, you know, cushions or magazines and they weren't coming from the average citizen. So I pressed Mr. Mayo on this a number of times. Mr. Longo collaborated my, my concern a few other times as to what we could potentially do in regards to these barrels and who was putting the trash in the barrels and making the sidewalks a little unsightly. So, you have in front of you a document that Mr. Mayo and, assumed, Town Council put together in regards to the laws that are in place and possibilities of enforcing. But I'd just like to have more input from the rest of the board, other than Tony and myself and Mr. Mayo, as to how we address these two locations where there are rooming houses or apartments, and they feel that those barrels on sidewalk are their trash bags. That's right.
Did we let them know? You can't do that?
Well, we have, well, the initial, the initial...
That's a good start.
Well, that's the initial part, but I'm going to defer to Mr. Mayo and Mr. Mullin as to what is the most logical course of action here.
Well, I think, first of all, Mr. Chairman, with respect to rooming houses, lodging houses, and places of more than three dwelling units, it's the Board of Health that enforces the state health code provisions on this point. And the health code requires that such owners maintain sufficient garbage and rubbish storage facilities for however many people live there. So, I think the, we might encourage the Board of Health to check with all of these places and ask, "Where are these facilities? And what do they consist of? How many barrels do you provide for them?" And somebody might actually want to go and check and make, take a photograph to confirm that these things exist. There's a, there's a distinction between that regulation and the criminal statute that, because the regulation says, "You owner, you have to provide these facilities." The criminal statute says, focuses rather on the person who deposits trash in the barrel, and says that if you are depositing household or commercial garbage, we, you know, it is a crime, punishable by a $200 fine. And the latter is enforced by the police department. So, in addition to contacting the Board of Health and encouraging enforcement with respect to multifamilies, I think we might also think about how we can assist the police department in chasing violators of the statute. And my thought is, invite merchants to report any misbehavior that they observe. If I were a downtown merchant, and I were paying to have my rubbish carted away every week, I would deeply resent my competitors who were freeloting on the public system. They should be encouraged to tell the police.
A couple things. Here's, we've been working with the health agent on this. What I plan to do is to, what Town Council suggested with the health agent, is to contact some of the property owners that own these larger dwelling units to make sure that they, A, are providing facilities for their tenants. My sense is, in some cases, they are not. And that's an issue in itself, that they are not providing what they should be. The other issue is, is that it is not only that the residential tenants that are utilizing the public trash barrels. I will tell you, because we go through the trash. We have our, one of our DPW guys go through it, and when we are going to the businesses, it is businesses that are using it, like Town Council suggested.
What kind of businesses? Like...
Well, let's put it this way. If we find, if we find a lot of hair in the trash, then maybe we know what kind of business it is. If we find things with their name on it, it makes it a little easier to find out what the business is.
I didn't know if you were going to say, you know, some office up in one of those buildings.
No, no. It's literally, like, they go outside and just dump their trash there. It's literally a retail type of, type of place. And then, some of them, by the way, are the first to complain about others.
Yes, always.
And yet, they are utilizing it as well. So, you know, I think that this is, unfortunately, an issue that has reared its ugly head. Interestingly enough, I shared with the chairman, a couple of weekends ago, I was in a, in the town of Concord. We all love downtown Concord. We've all talked about the cheese shop. And in there, there was a public trash barrel at 5:00 on Saturday night that was overflowing with trash, and I snapped a picture of it and sent it to the chairman, so he could see it's not just us. It's everywhere. But, you know, we pick up the trash Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday in the square. You know, we do a lot of picking that up. I think that this will help. Part of a vibrant downtown in some of these warm summer nights is that I'm hoping that there's a lot of patrons that are using some of the places, getting ice creams, getting what have you, and hopefully, they're using the public trash barrels. That's what they're for. But it's not just the people that live in these multiple dwelling units. It is businesses, what have you, and, you know, I think it's important that we get on them.
So, do we, do we call up the hair people, or the name, your names on the envelope?
I think I would go in and see them. Yeah. I don't think it'll be a call, it'll be a visit.
Right, we've let them know?
Yeah.
So, because, my comment before about how we told them is, basically, you know, there's a theory in the world that, like, thieves are created, and people who break laws, they're created because they do it once. "Oh, I didn't bring the trash to the barrel, I threw it, threw it out front, and nobody ever, I hope I don't get caught, and nobody ever said anything."
Right.
And the next time, it's like, you know, it's just easier for me to throw it there. Nobody seems to care. But when you start just letting people know, "We caught you," those behaviors typically just unwind really fast. So, that's why I...
Well, it's nice having the criminal statute behind us, and some of the cold breaks.
I want to be there when we go in the store with the barrel and say, "This is yours."
Just a foul...
"What the hell are you doing?" "We'll give you a pair of gloves and everything." "Can I come ride along that night?"
Tony, Jess.
I'd really love to put that in somebody's face.
Couple of quick points. If it is enforceable by the police department, you make those calls with the police chief, it's going to go a long way. And secondly, I'm curious, those multiple, multifamily units, do they have vacant storefronts down below?
Some may, some offhand. I don't think some of them do.
Interesting correlation.
Yeah. I can think of one that doesn't, anyway. Doesn't have any vacant storefronts.
Thank you, I'm good.
Just with all the stuff we try to do day in and day out for downtown revitalization, all these little baby steps, and it's, so often, it's the business owners or the property owners themselves who are screwing it up. And I, you know, I, I, I put some of this on, not blame, but I would ask for help from the Chamber of Commerce. Just step up to have greater awareness of these larger issues, what your, what downtown looks like, what the, you know, just the behavior of people, all of that, just, it all matters. Each little piece gets put together to make your downtown, you know, the downtowns we idolize or the downtown we have. And really need, you know, we'd really love to see the Chamber of Commerce have that be a, just a huge point that they make this year.
And I also think that some of these landlords, they owe it to their tenants to provide them with a place to put their, you know, their refuse. In a lot of instances, these tenants are not the wealthiest people in the world. They're having trouble making ends meet, and, and, and I don't want to, we should not disparage them, because I think in many instances, they have nothing else to do, and it's not fair to them. So, that's something that needs to be repaired as well.
So, do we, as a board, want to advise Mr. Mayo to move forward with putting in place the enforcement of the regulations and the statutes that currently exist?
It's already his job, isn't it?
I mean, it's right. I mean, it's already on the book. I don't under, it's here. So, yes.
It's the enforcement, it's the enforcement.
Enforcement. And then, I would add to that, Steve, I think DPW, we should look at that it's emptied four times a week, and maybe that needs to be increased. We're adding benches, we're having more people downtown. I hear you, that it's hair salons and people's personal mills.
That's part of it we'll look at, too.
But, you know, let's, let's look at it. Maybe we empty it every day. I mean, that, that's also something to consider, but the, it's here. We're not inventing anything, we're enforcing it, where...
Right. There are many times that we do send our own trash pack route when they're filled on, on the off days.
So, that's great.
So, that does happen when we need to. But I think that, I think the chairman wanted to make sure the board was aware that this is something that's going to go on, so, you know, so you...
Do we, are you not going to be blinded?
Decided by business.
Is there any magic in sending out a notice or a letter or something from the Board of Selectmen to everybody down, you know, in the affected area that says, "Dear so-and-so, you're unnoticed, this is a big deal."
We can do that.
I mean, that would be something we could...
Advise them on the statute, absolutely.
And they, and the fines.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we're, just let them know.
We're just working to make the downtown a lot better than what it is now. I mean, we're starting with this project, with the payment. It only makes sense, but it's not, it can't be just one or two people saying, "Well, we should be doing this." As a collective group, yes, just enforce what's, we're asking that what the laws are out there to be enforced. And sometimes, it just takes that from this board to let everyone know that we are trying to enforce what's out there, so that it doesn't happen all the time. So, yes, I do recognize that it's something that's already there, but it's just like parking, okay? Not everyone gets a parking ticket.
So, I think Brian's suggestion, let's reach out to the chamber, let everyone know that this rule exists. And people don't know, and people try to get away with things, but I think if we know, then we do it. And I think...
And that gentleman over there might be inclined to write something on the newspaper, and that helps. That it's a, it's, we're basically, we're a policymaking board, and we're, we'll set a policy here that this is important to us. And we're, we're going to communicate that to our number-one employee, that we think it's important, and let's hope that something changes the next time we talk.
And... I mean, there are hundreds of things we could be enforcing, but I think, to your point, Mr. Chairman, part of this is making sure that we, as a board, prioritize things that really matter. And this is something that really matters to the downtown. We could have trash pickup twice a day, but if someone's leaving a big, black trash bag that has a bunch of crap in it that won't even fit into the trash can, and it sits on top of it, that's going to be unsightly within two minutes of, you know, any collection, you know, that might have been missed. So, I do think that while it is enforcement, it's sending the clear messaging to the town administrator and DPW that this is a significant priority for the board as relates to, you know, public health, but also, you know, the look and feel of our downtown and what we're looking to achieve there. So, I think in that regard, we can be more assertive in that, although if I understand that it's a question of enforcement. There's enforcement, then there's prioritizing.
Very good. So, we should be also with that.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much for consideration on that one. We have a request from Barbara Nardon to gift to the town a tree to replace that JJ Round Playground, and for granite memorial plaque placed flush to the ground at the base of the tree, with all costs associated with purchasing the tree and plaque to be the sole responsibility of the requister. A motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Really?
Aye. Thank you. Want review and signing by Mr. Longo?
Typical payments, you know, for sped, reimbursement for classes for town employees, reimbursement for miles, you know, payments to vets, fuel reimbursements for schools, for public buildings, you know, supplies from local vendors, you know? Very typical stuff, debt payments, bond payments, nothing out of the ordinary. And Steve knows that if I find something, we go line by line, and if I find something that doesn't smell right, it goes right to the town accountant for verification.
I would say that's something that we need further explanation on. Would be a nicer way to put it.
Further explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Longo. Item 8, matters not anticipated by the chairman. Let us start on the right this time.
Two things. First, the American Legion Auxiliary is selling poppies currently, and the American Legion does great work for our military families, veterans, and I would just encourage you to, to think about this. I think this goes back many, many decades, and it's a really interesting story in terms of how it came to be. Basically, the lime that was the residual of the rubble of war got into the soil, and so, in places where there hadn't were, poppies began blooming, and expansively so. And so, a place that was devastated within, looked beautiful. So, it's a good backstory, and it's an important cause. The other piece is, the Experience Wakefield Spooktacular was yesterday, and despite the rain, it was a phenomenal event, the turnout was great. And you, just seeing all the kids and the families having a great time experiencing Wakefield, and Halloween and the costumes were very cool, too. So, I just congratulate all the organizers on a great event, and those are the kinds of activities, I think, that just make Wakefield shine as a community. So, congrats to all, and thanks to all those who came out. Thank you.
Tony.
Just kudos to the DPW and the public, the Wakefield Gas and Municipal Light Department for the work this past, you know, today, last night, in that heckish storm.
Right.
Yeah, I'll second that. My, my power was out for about 18 hours or so, which I will say is the longest it's ever been out the entire time I've lived in Wakefield. It's usually been an hour or two, maybe, they're on it. This one happened to be an entire, you know, telephone pole snapped in half. It was a major issue, and I think, because I called them up and said, "Hey, am I in this for the long haul? Is this a two-day issue?" Or, and they were waiting on Verizon, was the issue. So, so, there you go. So, so, great job by that, of course. Hey, just on the downtown, you reminded me of one thing I keep walk, two things I keep walking by downtown that I find troubling. What's with all the little signs that say, "Two-hour parking available"? Is that to encourage people to park there? Because it looks like the last thing you should do is park there, so...
A few years ago, we were requested by some of the merchants on that side of Main Street, trying to get people further down out of the downtown to move down there.
To park?
To park, yeah.
So, line parking spaces there.
Well, we wanted to see if it would work for us, but we will line parking.
Those cones look, I expect a ticket if I park next to them, those awful orange cones. It says, "Parking available." It looks, and almost the way it's written, it's like, "It's available if you need it somewhere else other than here, where we're not letting you park."
It was a pilot program that was...
Unless it crashed. So, and, and not for nothing, just having a bunch of orange cones littering the downtown just reminded me of that shed thing down by the lake.
Pilot, no chief, what can I tell you?
So...
My shed by the lake.
Number two, another shed down by the lake. You know, you pull it, you drive down the lake, you come by Hunter Dooley, you drive down the lake, you're meandering your way down on Main Street, and everything's looking wonderful out to the right. And then, you get to the light, and there's the sign that says, "Welcome to Wakefield." Except, you can't really see it, because it's a giant, orange trailer sign. It says, "Don't forget to pay your taxes." I mean, it's horrific, "Welcome to Wakefield." You could do a U-turn, you should do it now, so...
Okay.
I cannot agree more.
I agree with you on that.
I cannot agree more.
Damn. It was like, it's a nice effort, I know we need to pay our taxes and all that.
Needs to go.
How are you going to know what time meeting is, who they put the sign?
I'll figure it out. Yeah, those are the only two things, just having fun, but those are two...
Welcome back.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to let you know, there's a person who passed away this week, Dr. Patricia Tamagini. And I'm sure the folks that grew up in Wakefield know her. Tremendous citizen, lifelong resident. I've known her for at least 10 years, and just a wonderful person that I think that just needs to be recognized. She passed away on Thursday. She's having a wake on Wednesday, and burial on Thursday. She graduated from Our Lady of Nazareth Academy. She was also, later on, a chairperson of the Department of Fine and Performing Arts. Just a great, lifelong resident that just should be noted. And, secondly, I occasionally look through state House-sponsored bills. So, I wanted to bring up something. This one is very troubling, and I think the citizens of Wakefield should know about it. If it passes, it will affect them. 11 Massachusetts Democrats sponsor a bill to allow non-citizens to vote in local elections. This is very troubling. So, a bill sponsored by eight Massachusetts Democrats to allow non-U.S. citizens to vote in local elections continues to move forward by legislatures, by legislators in Boston. The bill introduced in the Massachusetts House referred to the Joint Committee on Election Laws on January 23rd. The Mass Senate concurred on the same day that they have been joint hearings on the bill in June and October of this year. So, the key part of the bill is this. "Notwithstanding the provisions of Section 1 of Chapter 51 of the General Laws or any other general or special law to the contrary, non-citizens 18 years of age or older residing in a city or town that accepts Section 1G inclusive may upon application have their names entered on a list of voters established by municipal election officials, and may thereafter vote in any municipal election for school committee, school committee questions, city council, and Board of Selectmen, for as long as they remain domiciled in the municipality." And to me, this is very troubling. Just, if you're a citizen, you get to vote. If you're not a citizen, you don't get to vote. So, I would suggest that you write to your state reps, Paul Broder, Donald Wong-Collum, So, I would suggest that you write to your state reps, Paul Broder, Donald Wong, Callum, Jason Lewis, the state senator, and Governor Charlie Baker.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Sorry. Did I say it's an opt-in by the town? That's kind of what I heard there, that they passed this enabling legislation and the town's going to opt in.
I didn't see that part.
I thought you said apply to-
Well, this is, this is, this is from-
The Mullin might just get one.
Yeah, well, it's still-
I, from what Mr. May said, I gather that it's a local acceptance statute, meaning that town meeting would have to approve it. What I find amazing from what he read is that a non-citizen would be able to vote for selectmen and school committee.
Right.
But not more. So, you can't vote for the planning board, you can't vote for the Board of Housing Authority.
Right, they're listening to the floor. That's correct, right. This is it right here too. I just want to make note of it. If it's, if it's something I'm misreading, but I just think if it's something that important, if it can change the direction of how we vote in our own town, it's all local, it's just for local.
So, yeah, I read this to require approval both by town meeting and also as a ballot question, so it would have to go before the voters.
Okay.
There you go.
Good.
I always think about those things in terms of, if I were in another country, would I expect them to be like, would you like to vote?
No, it just doesn't seem like it.
You know, I don't know. It just seems, I'm sure there's a good reason behind it that's not being offered here.
Just something to be aware of, that's all. And lastly, just one more thing, bear with me. I know you didn't hit your 8:30.
We're eight o'clock on you here.
The update for the parking committee by Mr. Mayo, I wanted to get an update to see where we're at on that.
Yeah, we will be giving an update on that, particularly in light of some of the work we're doing with the branding and the downtown and the wayfinding and the street changes. So, that'll all go through together, but it will be coming forward.
Good. That's it. Thank you.
And we'll get rid of the orange cones before that happens.
Orange cones. Thank you.
Three things. So, one, folks who have come up to Greenwood are seeing the completion of the Hallmark Health Medical Office Building. I'm on their Board of Trustees. They are having a ribbon cutting November 14th. They are planning to be open November 1st, so you will see, if you drive by, you've seen the furniture there. The doctors and physical therapists and lab services are coming in soon, a great addition to our town in that Honeydew right across the street now. Second, I was running a little late today. Rep. Paul Broder organized a blood drive in Malrose and I am going to be working with him to have one in Wakefield, so stay tuned for information about that. And then the last thing, on social media today, you saw a lot about the Boys and Girls Club doing a pilot program and offering childcare at our town meeting next Monday. I got a call on my drive over here, Anthony, they are getting a great response. So, nice pilot program that they are offering to our town this year. That's it.
Thank you.
Just want to remind people that town meeting is Monday, a week from tonight, and not just the two important questions on there with regard to the name change that this board all supported and putting forth and the plastic ban. I had to remind someone else on the train today that it's not a plastic bag ban, it's a reduction. I think people need to listen to the presentations because you might assume a lot of things that are inaccurate. It's also tax classification, which is so important. Ed had mentioned that he certainly wanted Victor and the town to do better. I think we all wanted that as well. We just didn't jump in on Victor at that time. I think it's important for residents to understand what the tax classification means, why we try to do the best we can shifting away from the residents in a town that's booming and good property values. That sometimes means taxes go up. I think Tony and I might be the only two Board of Selectmen who have elderly relatives with fixed incomes in this town and so it is, it's important to me that we take this seriously, which we certainly do, which is why we're talking about revitalizing Main Street and raising the commercial base so that the residents can get the best bang for their bucks. So, I think if more people came to town meeting to learn all of that, you'll understand what we're doing. So, that's it. Thank you.
Come on.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Mayo?
Just one very quick thing, that one thing we do offer that is really a very interesting day is for new residents of the town of Wakefield, we have the Wakefield 101, which will be this Saturday from 12 to 1:30 at the library. We do the spring one on, I think, a Thursday night and we do the fall one on a Saturday. I will have a table there that is also there for the, for the Board of Selectmen. I will tell you, it is great to meet some of these new people who are moving to Wakefield and why they moved here, some of the stories are very interesting, but there'll be, you know, school department will be there, police, fire, DPW, different community organizations will be there. It's a great day and a great way to meet some citizens. So, 12 to 1:30 at the library this Saturday, November 4th.
Thank you. I just want to echo what Ian said as far as town meeting, November 6th, at 7:30 PM, there'll be-
Seven.
Is it seven?
Seven.
Seven o'clock?
Seven.
Wow, okay. I'm off tonight, I'm sorry. No, I'm off, I'm off tonight. So, at 7:00 PM on November 6th, town meeting, hopefully we can get through it in one evening. Also, a reminder to everyone that our next selectmen's meeting will be conducted at the Savings Bank Theater on November 13th at 7:00 PM. Really think that's about it for me, so I'll entertain a motion to-
And for those at home, the Savings Bank Theater is in the high school on, at 60 Farm Street. Some people confuse it. It's just a larger room because we have a public hearing.
You should put a big sign up front.
There is a big sign that says that. Okay.
Flashing neon lights? Okay.
Paying property taxes here.
Especially because it's actually in violation of our own sign by law that says no changeable copy signs. So, those are specifically excluded in our sign by law, but nobody pays attention to that anyway.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Move in a second at all? Favor? Thank you very much.